Okay, welcome, everybody. We have a lot of people tonight. I'm Naomi Miller, Chair of the Shaftesbury Select Board, and I am calling to order this regular Select Board meeting on Monday, May 5, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in Cole Hall. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. Minutes from last week. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Zoe, does anybody have any? I have a couple of things. Does anybody have?
Paula does.
Yeah.
Yeah? What did you want to amend?
Oh, no amendment. Sorry, I was skipping ahead too.
No.
I was skipping ahead of myself.
Okay, I'm on the meeting minutes?
Yep.
Just the five, the vote counts, the 5-0-0 as opposed to the 4-0-0?
It should all be?
Five.
Five, zero, zero. And under number one, I just thought we ought to, we should actually make some decision. It says, "Select Persons." Do we want to be referred to as select persons or Select Board members? It doesn't matter, but we should probably not be going back and forth about it.
Oh, in the minutes?
In the minutes, right. And it goes various ways. So I thought I would put it on everybody's radar and we can arrive at a consensus at another time.
Okay. I'll put it, it's on my radar.
It's on your radar, good. And also, in number seven, Ms. Dexter's name is misspelled. It is D-E-X-T-E-R, not D-E-C-K-E-R. You feel? Okay.
Which day? That was the last meeting?
This was April 21st.
Was Brad up there?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
He was, but he wasn't on the camera.
Oh, got you. No, sorry, I just, the vote count, my memory doesn't go back to you.
Yes, he was here.
He was here.
Yeah. We had a water board meeting too, so remember.
Everybody was here.
Yeah, I didn't remember either.
All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Thank you. Paula, do you have an announcement?
I do, yes, I do. From the Assessor's Clerk, the reappraisal continues. So look for postcards in the mail. She also says grievance hearings are on Tuesday, May 13, 2025, and the purpose of these is to grieve the value of your property. You must file out, fill out a grievance application, which can be found online on our webpage or at Cole Hall. They can be dropped off to the Assessor's office or email to assessor@shaftsberrybt.gov or call Gina with questions. The other announcement I want to put out there is we still need volunteers for some committees, right? We're forming an Emerald Ash Borer Committee to tackle that problem and identify trees, and they've already started, but we do need more members. So if you're a tree lover and want to help, Planning Commission and the DRB too, right? Do we need members?
Yes, the Planning Commission and the DRB both need members.
Okay.
And to go back to the Emerald Ash Borer Committee, we don't need people to kettle on the trees, I think, because that, we have all the volunteers we need for that. We need people to sit on the committee over a long period of time making decisions about how to deal with the issue.
The only other thing I want to offer is that in response to some of the suggestions that the auditor has made over the years, where we got two new Nemrick modules. One is cash receipts. Instead of cash registers, the people who take cash in will have the module because it connects to the other modules, like all the other ones, like treasure. It's just a better flow. And Carlin and Gina and I sat on some training for the zoning administrator portal, planning and zoning, and we're going to streamline everything. So she's switching over to that. So Nemrick modules are designed to speak to one another. So we're going to do that to streamline operations. So that's exciting. We're excited about that. That's all.
Great. Anybody else have other announcements? Warrants, the fun of the evening.
Oh, yes, there's quite a few of them. Do this one first. Thank you.
Okay, we have here a check warrant report number 25027. Could I have, oops. For $53,172.45, could I have a motion? Moved by Mike.
Seconded.
Seconded by Zoe. Thank you. Okay, items over 1,000. Aflac, isn't it? Aflac for $1,594.
Employee supplemental insurance.
Supplemental insurance. The Bennington County Sheriff's Department for $5,220.
That's the sheriff fee for April.
Ove fuels for $2,076.
Ove, saw them. Two down here. Gas, oil, and diesel, DPW.
DPW, okay. CAI Technologies for $2,400.
That one is on here. Those are the Lister's tax maps, the maintenance of those maps.
Randomly, Eztec Systems, Inc., 28317.
Is that with an E, Eztec?
ESI.
ESI.
Oh, ESI. Oh, yeah, it's the phones, the Cole Hall phone system. That I knew what it was. I was like, Eztec? I don't remember reading that.
Innovative Surface Solutions, $5,454 and $5,440.
DPW.
That's surface.
Surface stuff.
Those surfaces, yes. Madison Repair Services, $1,125.
Mm-hmm, that's truck number six, repair on that truck.
Okay.
All right, truck.
Nemrick, two checks, one for $1,795, another for $4,275.
The $1,700 is the new cash receipts module and the $4,001 is the grand list fee for reappraisal.
RCS Consulting, $1,640.
There are two of them.
Are there?
Oh, I took them. These are sticking. That one's the monthly network maintenance fee for the computers.
Sycamore Landscaping, $1,600 and $3,208.
One is the graveyard maintenance, the cemeteries, and the other is mowing.
Mowing, right.
Mowing contract.
Uline, $1,032.75.
Oh, that is a park expenditure. We got a message board for Howard Park.
Oh, wow.
It's not out yet, but it's downstairs in a box. Yeah, we're very excited. The fire department's very excited.
That's great. Treasury Operations Division, $4,204. V State TR.
State tax name.
Vermont, State Treasury Operations Division.
Was that attached to that one?
It is.
Those have to do with taxes. I didn't write what they were because it's not part of the invoices.
It's part of payroll.
Payroll.
Payroll, thank you.
There's, they go to the IRS and to the state of Vermont with every pay period.
Great, okay.
Used to be handled by a payroll company, so you didn't have it broken out that way.
Any questions? All in favor?
Naomi, here's the payroll warrant.
Payroll warrant number 23 for $659.92. No. Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Second. Zoe, thank you. And this is, as usual. All in favor?
Naomi, the one that you just threw over to Mike is the last one from two weeks ago that didn't make the meeting. You had already signed it.
That's why I had my signature.
Exactly, yes. I was about to say it. I was like, she's going to.
Can you just talk about it for a moment, Paula?
Mm-hmm, yep. The one that Mike just signed?
Yeah.
It, two weeks ago was the last payroll, other than this one. It wasn't ready for the last Select Board meeting. It was ready the day after, and Naomi came in and signed it. But so now everyone else has to sign it.
Okay. Is that it with the warrants?
No. We have a water warrant.
We have a water warrant? Thank you. Why do I feel like I've never seen one of these before?
Nor have I, so.
We do those with a transfer, so we're not writing a check to ourselves. You have seen them before, but you haven't seen it for the new building, so I think that's what's making it look different.
I see, okay. Thank you. So we have two of them.
Should be three.
Three, okay. I'm sorry.
Cole Hall and the fire department and the new building.
And the new building, okay. Okay. Do we want to take them all together or one at a time?
All together.
Together.
All together. So they are for town offices, $114.54. The fire station, $254.54. And the new building, $79.54. Can I have a motion? Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Zoe. All in favor? Where do we sign this?
And then just one more.
Wow!
I know, we got a lot. Social Security and the retirement funds. The town portion.
The town portion of Social Security and the retirement funds. Okay. So it's $5,562.67.
You can just sign.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna fall.
It's PRW number 10. The whole thing is $22,854.52.
So moved.
Thank you, Zoe.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor? Okay, public comments. Public comments? Hello, Jim.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Do I get to?
Would you like, you get to take this seat of, quit, head of the table.
Hey, already stepped on somebody's foot. Hi, Jim Cassidy from the Shaftesbury Historical Society. I'm also here with Abby DeSandro, our treasurer. We wanted to thank the board for your help with our event that we had on Saturday promoting it and give you a brief update of what happened and how we did.
Cool.
Is that all right? So the event took place on Saturday from 11:00 to 5:00. We wound up having over 200 guests in attendance throughout the day. We had help from 10 of the local scouts that were from a local chapter, as well as volunteer students from Man Anthony High School also came to help us out, and they stayed all day and were remarkably helpful and learned a lot. Altogether, we had 26 volunteers in addition to the board of the Historical Society to get us through the day. The events that we had, this is only, this is only one, but this event is over two years in planning, and it was organized by Jonas Spivak, who is the Bennington County State Rep. for the 250th Convention, Commission, I'm sorry. And there was an encampment there. They were overnight on our property, and then they moved up to Manchester and beyond. The thing was organized over a two-year period by local Historical Societies from the various towns that were going to be participating in this. And so ours, we were tapped to host this particular event with the encampment and everything. We had 14 people staying overnight, and it was quite a thing. Ted Haberfield, one of our board members' husbands, took photographs. Jen, we forwarded some of those to you. Did you get those?
They went up on our Facebook page this afternoon.
Okay, yeah, and he has an album, a complete album beyond those pictures that were forwarded to you that we will make available. And if you could as well post that on the website, that would be great.
Album of?
An album of photographs, slightly more than we sent you. So, and it's a little bit more organized. Yeah, so that was it. And again, we just wanted to thank you for helping us to promote it, and it was, it was a good day. You know, given the weather, it was really remarkable turnout.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing it.
That's all right. We had fun. Abby, anything else?
Our next event coming up is Ordinary Heroes, where we're going to be highlighting a local person on Saturday, June 7. Everybody's welcome to that to find out who this year's Ordinary Hero is.
It's a secret.
And also be at the Golusha House.
It'll be at the Golusha House.
2:00 p.m.
Yes.
2:00 p.m. on June 7.
Yes.
This is just a summary of the events that took place on Saturday, so you can pass them around. This is what went on all day. Jen was there, she can, she can swear to it.
She can attest, huh?
She can attest. All right? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Very much.
Any, any other comments from, from the public? Are we used to having some in public?
I don't have a comment, but I have something I'd like to discuss with all of you.
Sure. Come on. Let us know. Your name and?
Yep. I'm Barbara Weatherall. I live in the village. I live on Cleveland Avenue. I'm just doing this because I'm tired of it. And it's time to, my voice has to be heard. On Friday, May 2, in the evening between 8:30 and 8:45, a person on Holiday Drive decided to start shooting off fireworks. Now, I don't know how many of you live in, nobody really lives in the village, right? You guys don't live in the village at all? Marie does.
I heard it.
Yeah.
And Melanie does.
Okay, so the house is located on the corner of Holiday and Sycamore Lane. And at first, I thought it was someone that was shooting off a gun because that's what it sounded like, and that's how loud these fireworks were. So I went outside, and I could see from our backyard, looking towards Holiday Drive, someone was shooting off fireworks. And they were like bottle rockets and the regular rockets and the screamers that they have. There are many, there's many elderly people in that area, and that bothers me also because a lot of them live by themselves. And it's, it's just a bad thing because you don't, we don't know what's happening to those people that are in those homes. They could have a heart attack from it because they don't know what's going on if they're ill enough to, that can cause. They can be scared and sit and not even call anybody to find out what's going on. So can you imagine what this sounds like to them and the fear it puts in them? Many animals also have an issue. And I have a dog that has a major issue. They can't tolerate this noise from bottle rocks, rockets, and other screamers because they don't know where that noise comes from and what the noise is to them. So they, what they want to always do is run and take off or hide. And they shake. Our dog goes through breathing difficulty because she's panting so hard, she gets to the point where she could actually pass out. We discussed this with a vet too in Arlington. And also, she also gets very hyper. She doesn't know which way to turn, which way to go. She doesn't know where to hide, and that's not, I mean, there's other animals too, I know, all around the area that have the same issue. So that was my other concern too. But I think it's time that the town steps up and tries to help us in the village stop these people from shooting off fireworks. Number one, it's illegal in the state of Vermont. And I do have something that I pulled out. Now, originally, I had found it on your do's and don'ts on your bylaws, and fireworks were listed. I went back today to go find it, and it's no longer there. And I'm like, why was that taken off? It's not anywhere on any of your what's allowed and what's not allowed.
In the zoning?
Exactly. I couldn't find it. So I pulled up the Vermont Department of Public Safety, the Division of Fire Safety, and all about the fireworks. And of course, it tells us that fireworks are illegal. And it gives you a picture of the fireworks that are totally illegal, and most of those are what was going on Friday night. It's just, it goes on and on because we have a neighbor that moved into the area, I don't know how many, maybe a couple of years ago, that lives almost behind us on Holiday Drive. And they didn't, they didn't come from Vermont, they came from another state. And they have, every year that they've been living there, they started out in the backyard, which borders our property, shooting off fireworks. And these are not younger people either. So they sit at their campfire, and then they start doing their fireworks. And of course, they're going over people's houses because these are those bottle rockets, and they're shooting over our driveway at the same time. So I went out very nicely, and I said, "Excuse me, could you please stop the fireworks? You're really hurting my dog." "Okay, we're sorry." And they, they stopped for about five minutes. And then it started again. I called the state police. That's a joke. I'm not kidding you. I was told there's not much they can do. And that sometimes they can't get there because they don't have anybody to get there to, to send anybody. The only time that they ever came is when somebody else decided to do a bomb-type tizenite on Cleveland. And I called the sheriffs, not the sheriffs, the state police, and they did show up. And the fire department showed up because it did sound like a bomb went off, and it was something like that that did go off. So they all took care of that, which I was happy. But this fireworks stuff, especially right behind me, has got to stop. Something has got to be said to these people, and I think it's got to come from the town because we can't get any help from anybody else. And when you live in the village and you live that close to these people that are doing that, and they know it's illegal, but they still go over to New Hampshire and get their stuff and bring it back. And I know it's hard to get everybody to stop doing it, but you're not going to get everybody to stop doing it. But we need to let the village, all the people in the village, know there's going to be consequences for it. There's got to be because this is not right. It's not right to the elderly that are living there. It's not right to any veterans that may have some issues. It's not right to our animals, and it's not just our animals, it's the animals that, our backyard is like, everybody, all the deer come, the bear come, we got the bobcat that comes when this starts, and plus, it's not good for the environment.
And it's illegal.
Exactly. I tried that, but that's like talking to a wall because it's like nothing ever happens. And we've got to, we really have got to do something.
Is this like every weekend? How often?
I don't know, they just started. These people that did it on Sycamore and Holiday just started it Friday night, and it was.
They do it before?
Oh, yeah, it goes on and, it goes on. It'll continue as the weather gets better. That's my husband back there talking.
Somebody else does it.
Right, and then they all start, exactly, right. Yep. And the people that were, that were behind us, they moved to the front of their house, which doesn't have a lot of property, to Holiday Drive, the road itself.
So they're in the front yard of the house?
So they're in the front yard of the house, right by the road, and cars are kind of driving by, and it's like, somebody's going to get hurt. Or somebody's going to, or they're going to, some rocket's going to land on something that it shouldn't land on.
That's fire.
And it's going to get, right, and if we have any dry spells in the summertime?
I think we have to talk to the sheriff.
That's what I was thinking. We've got to be able to, I'm willing to let them sit in my driveway if they want to. They can sit there all they want because this, maybe that'll stop the people behind us from doing it. My husband and I thought about that. You know, we said, "Maybe we need to pay for them to sit there." And I'm like, "Why should we have to pay them?" I don't want to do that. I mean, I know them, I know the captain, the chief himself personally, but it's just, I don't want to do that. I, I would rather bring it to you guys, and please ask you to help us.
Thank you for bringing it.
Because it's, I wrote a lot, but I forget I'm going to make it short for you, so I did. Does anybody want to see this?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can pass it around.
Thank you so much for coming.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you for letting us know.
Well, I figured somebody's got to do it because nobody else is doing it. They all put it out on Facebook, and that's as far as it goes. And I said to my husband, "I am done with it." And I said, "I'm hoping that we can resolve this by June, that somebody can let us know that it's going to be okay for July when July comes, that we don't have to deal with my backyard neighbor because that's the biggest one." Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And your time.
Thank you for coming.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, of course. Now you go tell them who you are.
They already know one.
Some do.
My, my name's Darrell Weatherall. Her probably worse half, I don't know. But I worked, other half. I worked 30 years for the Vermont Veterans Home. And I don't know if anybody, if anybody has ever seen what fireworks does to a combat hardened veteran. But I have, and it's ugly. And I think about some poor person in their house on Cleveland Avenue, and all of a sudden, somebody, their next door neighbor 30 feet away lights these things off, and all of a sudden, they're back in Korea. They're back in Vietnam or back in. They're back in Vietnam, or back in Fallujah. You know, we shouldn't be treating our veterans like this, you know. I, I think we, everybody deserves better than this. You all talk, everybody talks about be kind and stuff like that, well, that's not being kind, you know, so, that's all I got.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's not the same group, it's not the same person who set off the Tannerite?
No, no, they're kind of, kind of the Shasberry Triangle there. But, yeah, no, it's not, they're not far away from them, but it's not them. But they have done that in the past, too.
Gotcha.
The Tannerite crew, so.
That was the one I was talking about.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing this to us. We will do whatever we can to get back to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Anybody else on the list? I'm still thinking about the dogs. My dog goes crazy when she hears fireworks, you know, two miles away.
Yeah.
I was just the same way. She can't even stand a gunshot go off.
Um, yeah. Let's talk about money. Can we, can we see the cash flow, please? Did, I sent the, oh, yeah.
You did.
I did, yes. Most of this, we've already talked about. You can see, I think I mentioned before, um, that very large amount of delinquent taxes for this time of year, it's very good to see. I took, took a look at the, uh, delinquent taxes outstanding versus other years at this time, and it is quite a bit lower. I don't know what, um, what Holly's doing differently, but she's, she's really on top of things. We, I don't think there's nothing else there we need to talk about. We talked about that Comcast refund last time, I was very excited about that, and I'm told there's even more coming. Um, we can look at the.
Jen.
Yeah, let's go, Jen. Look at the bottom half. Nothing here that we haven't discussed, uh, the cash balance, I have said before, is making me a little nervous. Um, there, there is some money due to the, to the general fund that I will be transferring, so that's, I think that there was a fairly large equipment purchase, that was $33,000 or something, that that's, that money's going to go back to the general fund. So it's, that's, it's not as dire as it looks, but it's, um, fairly dire. Um, we looked down at the budget sta, uh, budget status at the bottom of the page. This is a story I've heard a bunch of times now, both the revenues and expenditures are well ahead of, um, or they should be, but that's because we, we've done some things that are outside the budget on, on both sides. So it's, it's not terribly informative, the, the way it usually looks, um, you can see last year for comparison. It's, this year is, is unusual, so it's not terribly useful to look at it, but, um, but that's what it looks like. Any questions about, about the general fund there? Okay, if we could take a quick look at the reserve accounts. I think we've already talked about all of these things, too, that those, that was just, if you see in the debits column, that was just money that was due to the, uh, general fund that we already transferred over. I think I talked about last time, about the, our formerly known as ARBA, the 900 Fund, uh, is now at zero. And I think that, Paula, you, you spoke to somebody official, and they were fine with the way we've handled everything and getting.
It's all reported and.
Yep.
Done and dusted.
Excellent, yep. So that's very good.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Way two weeks before the deadline.
Yeah, nice. I've got the, the water bills are printed and ready to be stuffed in envelopes, that's something I'm going to try and find time to do, um, I think Wednesday, so people can look forward to seeing those in their mailboxes soon. The only other thing I want, oh, any questions about reserve funds? The only thing I wanted to, to say is a slight amendment or, you know, addition to what Paula said about the cash receipts module. It isn't just that it streamlines things, it, it's actually very important for internal controls, that's why our auditor really wanted it. It, it tightens up the way cash is handled. He's going to be very happy when he sees it. It's actually not simpler, it's an automatic transfer. It, it makes reconciliation actually a little bit trickier for, for me and for the elected auditors, but, um, we'll, we'll learn how to communicate everything that needs to happen with it. But it is, um, it is something they've wanted for a while, and it's, it's really, uh, and Tiffany is training each department as it comes up to speed, and she's been really, really great, huge impetus behind it, and very, very helpful. So the, the, um, Marlene's cash is on there, the dump is up to speed now, zoning's coming. I'm the, the foot dragger, because there's some, some things we need to figure out about closing out former tax years, so that we don't have any weirdness in the reporting between delinquent taxes and current taxes. So I, that's going to be a conversation with Nemrick that I've been too busy to have, but, but, um, pretty soon, I'm hoping that the cash module will talk to tax receipts as well. So that's something to look forward to. We'll have it up before, certainly before taxes start being collected. Anything about, any of that?
No. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
DPW report. Paula? Yeah, very quickly, they're, they're doing their spring things. As you can see from the receipts, they're fixing trucks, um, probably doing a lot of winter repair, and they're, you know, upgrading and doing all the spring chores that they have. Recreation committee interviews. Actually, it turns out the only one, um, because Lynn Williams has withdrawn her resume, Marie Watson. You'll have to sit in the big chair.
Wherever you want.
You can sit wherever you want.
No, I'll sit there. It's fun, we can swing back and forth and everything. Hi, strangers.
Put my, I can, I can talk from here.
So Marie has kindly offered to.
Recreation Committee, that's fun.
I'm okay.
Fun. Oh, it was so much fun when we had the Moonlight.
Walk.
Walk. And then, yeah, and the field up there is so great, because my grandsons both play Little Leagues, so it was exciting to watch them being an official. But that park is just, is going to be better utilized now that.
More people.
The improvements. And even, you know, Linda Tillner's Trail has been improved, you know, in the past few years, so that people, it's more accessible to a lot of people, and that's pretty exciting, a nice walk through there.
So what is it you're, um, hoping to do and bring?
Energy, I guess, maybe some creative ideas, because we had talked at the Moonlight thing, I know, I went with my grandkids through Linda Tillner's Trail, and we brought little, um, fairy house things, because you can hide them inside, little people inside, like some of the old, um, openings in, in trees, and so it looks like a little house. Anyway, we were talking about trying to have a community event, kind of.
During the summer, yeah.
I mean, you can get those little packets of those at the dollar store, so having them available, but getting families up there, and we know that, you know, my, my kids have utilized, um, the pavilion up there for birthday parties, and it's just really nice, that part of, I mean, there's other potential future stuff for Recreation Committee. It's not just Howard Park, but that's a biggie.
Maybe we could take this moment to ask you to just talk briefly, Dana, about what's coming up for the Rec Committee.
The Rec Committee. We love the Rec Committee, and it was, it was delightful that Marie had joined us for Greenup Day on Saturday, and we're really looking forward to her being with us and part of our committee. She is tremendously energetic, and she has a vast knowledge of all kinds of different things. And, um, with, with Howard Park itself, the amount of traffic that we're now getting because of that conversion field is amazing, it really is amazing. And we have the new sign out there that says Howard Park, we can now find where the entrance is, uh, to get down there, yeah, which is wonderful, and we are going to continue to improve as much as we can. We're looking forward to getting that dog park.
Dog park, yeah.
Yeah.
Yippee. We really, really, this has been a work in progress for a number of years, yeah. You know, it's not as simple to do as people think. There's a lot of planning that goes into it, and.
When are you thinking it's going to go in?
Sooner, rather than later.
A lot of people want it.
Yeah, a lot of people want it. We have a lot of people that are gung ho about it, and the DPW has volunteered to dig the holes that we need in order to get those, the large poles in for part of the fencing. So they're wonderful to work with, oh, by the way. We love our DPW, they are very dedicated to the town. And to the, you know, anytime we contact them, Mike Yanati and the boys are just right there, they're wonderful, yep.
Real asset to our town.
They really are.
At that meeting, we had people that don't live in our town.
That's right.
That commented how wonderful it was to work with them and to get that project done with the Little League people, so that.
And, uh, yeah, you were asking about what else is going to be going on at the park. Now Kayla Becker, who is the, let's see, the Berkshire YMCA coordinator. Over in Bennington, I know that she's going to be contacting us about using Howard Park for part of their camp. Now, she had done that two or three years ago, they were over there, and that worked out very well. So I'm looking forward to her contacting us and getting all those kids in there again.
That's great.
Yep. So that's what we're up to.
Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion to appoint Marie Watson to the Recreation?
Subdued.
Second.
Seconded by Zoe, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oh, boy.
That was a damning second.
Another committee for Marie. Yeah. I know, you just mentioned a couple others, I went, oh, no. Actually, I have another to go.
And thank you for coming.
You know, busy people are always busy. And you're always.
Cemetery Committee.
I'm Kathy Cardiff. I don't know if you got copies, it's real, woo, it's real simple. Every two years, we're required to update the rules and regulations, we did it in 2022, and we finished this in November. Yeah. We finished, um, the corrections, and basically what we did is, is just broke it out in a better way of looking at it. There really wasn't any changes, other than we, instead of casket burials, we said traditional non-cremated burials, um, and changed the date of when holiday wreaths and flowers need to be removed from February 1st to March 31st. And added that, you know, about winter burials, um, and this was in conjunction with, with Jen, the funeral home will receive an invoice from the town, because they're charged if they want to have a winter burial, and, uh, you know, DPW has to, um, plow, or the ground has to be thawed, or something like that. So the way to do that is to add it to the funeral costs, so. I guess, and that would be handled through you, Paula? Is that what, or Jen, or you just invoice the?
If our DPW has to plow.
Yeah.
I will tell Mike to tell us to build them. I don't think it's right, because the funeral homes, if they.
Sure.
Plow, they build them. Our guys, it's their time.
Sure, oh, yeah. And I have to, I have to reiterate what Marie and Dana were saying. DPW is really helpful. They're like, they're just so easy to work with.
They're great, yeah.
They're so easy to work with now, you know. But anyway, I, just in case you had any questions, I wanted to bring it to you. We do the work, and then you just have to approve it. So.
Do you want to, for the, for the purposes of public viewing, do you want to show us on the screen where the changes are?
There was a lot more than just a few, there was, there was many changes throughout the three or four meetings. Did you have them all outlined?
Uh, no, I don't, I actually went over, um, the, the previous one. And the new one, and I, that's what I pulled out, um, other than we.
Several changes before you made the final change, so we can't show you every single change.
Okay.
Because we don't, didn't keep track of that.
Yeah.
But right in the beginning, I mean, we added semi-five right in the beginning.
Right.
Yes.
Yep. So it's just something that's. Yeah.
So does anybody have any questions? Mr. Broadcast?
No, front desk, ready, no.
Okay. This is online, right?
This is online.
Yeah, the new one.
The new ones will not be online until after the Select Board signs it, and then they'll do it to me. Then they'll be up, then they'll be printed and put in the cemeteries.
And there's a date at the top of when it's approved, so that's when anything would change, which would be like the date of the, when holiday things need to be taken off. Change, so it's all passed.
Okay. Are we ready to take a vote on this?
Okay. Thank you very much.
2025 Lemp adoption.
Good evening, Paul Dantrow, Emergency Management Director for Town of Shasberry. So every year, the local emergency management plan needs to be updated and adopted by the Select Board. Just thought I'd go through a quick minute here to talk a little bit about the Lemp itself, those are.
I read it.
So if anyone is not familiar, or asking, what is the purpose of the local emergency management plan? It's basically a municipality's guidebook to how they'll respond in the event of an incident. Uh, the plan identifies points of contact that the state can coordinate with during the incident. Uh, it also identifies potential hazards and vulnerabilities within a community, and the resources that the municipality has to respond to an incident. Each municipality is required to have an up-to-date LEMP, and that also applies for grant funding from Vermont Emergency Management, so must have the updated plan in place, otherwise potentially would not be able to receive funds, or receive increased funding during emergency relief assistance, if that need arises.
I understand from the state that it's largely due to your work, we are more up-to-date than most towns in the state.
We'll let them figure that. I only know of one other town that, that employs me, I know their Lemp's been approved last month, that's about, that's about it. Changes from previous year's Lemp, I figure I'd just highlight a couple things. Vermont Emergency Management did update the, the template slightly, reduced some things, simplified a couple others, so the new template is what was used and adopted, or, excuse me, was used to prepare. Some other updated information includes adding Jen Holly through the base document, because that was a change from previous. In Annex A, included for points of contact, the EMD, Emergency Management Directors for both Arlington and the town of Bennington, since they're our north and south neighbor. So that's now in our plan as an easy-to-reach area. In Annex B, uh, which is the continuity of operations plan, uh, includes, included in. includes, included in, within that, just for the hazard mitigation piece, the vulnerability assessment that was done in the 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan for the town of Bennington. So you'll see that matrix in there. What I just request tonight is if the Select Board would make the motion to adopt the LAMP, there is the adoption form that would be signed. If that is signed, I have signed it myself. If adopted by the Board and Select Board Chair signs it, we'll then forward that up to our Vermont Emergency Management contact and have that on record. I'll just point out the LAMP is a work in document. So of course, as we go through the year, we'll continue to update if need be, different points of contact or locations. I know, I'm sorry, I left out one thing. One other addition from previous year was there's an Annex D, which is the Ice Storm Annex that goes specific for an ice storm event. So that would be the other thing through this year. I know additional annexes may be worked on similar to that, to be put into and adopted into it. And for anyone at home and for members, just would point out that, you know, the LAMP is a good guideline for our municipality, how we will react. But as an individual, the best thing to do is try to prepare ahead for any emergency. And Jen, if you'd help me out with, if you want to pull up the links on the, what I found is on the Vermont Emergency Management website, there's some several good resources. So the first one, you know, that gets you to the, let's see if it pulls up. Let me go to a second. Maybe. There it's still. Oh, incompatible or installing it. Okay, I'll keep talking for a second then. So the Vermont, the first one that Jen was clicking on is Vermont Emergency Management webpage. And on that, there's a specific site for how to prepare.
Yep.
And once you go to the Prepare site, the next couple links after that are some that'd be very useful for families. One is Vermont Family Emergency Preparing This Workbook. So any family at home could download that, look at that. It gives you a lot of good information on how to prepare for general emergencies. The next one would be the Emergency Recognition for Engin, sorry, Emergency Recognition for Individuals Who Need Special Assistance. Oh, here we go, sorry. So if scroll down, please. Scroll a little more. Oh, I'm sorry, up, up. All right, so the first one, the Emergency Preparing This Workbook is the very first link right there. And it just kind of tells how a family can prepare for any kind of emergency or disaster and how to do things, you know, be prepared. You know, having responded to several different emergencies in other capacities of firefighters, that's not the time when you want to try to do the prepare. Obviously, as families, you know, if you can do things ahead of time, it helps out. So that's a good supply list on that. The next one that if I could highlight would be the Emergency Recognition for Individuals Who Need Special Assistance, slightly down, right, yep, up, right there. I thought this was another useful link. And again, just something to help for and, you know, let families start thinking about stuff, you know, ahead. And then the next two, one was Emergency Supply List, just how to build a quick kit for yourself. Maybe scroll down. So a little more, yep. It's a basic disaster supply kit and some things to think about that families might think about tucking away in a tote or bag within their home or just have readily available. Okay. And then the last one was 12 Ways to Just Prepare. That's just a nice handy, one-page little poster. If you go to the English version, please. There you go. And just a, just a quick little thing to help, help a family kind of one-stop think through stuff. So what we'll do is also following the meeting, I think we'll look to build an emergency management page or something to that nature and have all these links or something readily available and use as a forum to continue to post additional information. Subject, any questions?
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Right in the front, if, well, I'm sorry, if the Board would motion to adopt, you could sign, start.
Thank you.
Motion that we adopt LAMP, this updated LAMP.
2025 updated LAMP.
I don't know if L is for local?
Local.
Local Emergency Management Plan.
Second.
Zoe, second, thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say, I found, when I first got on this board and read the red list for the first time, I found it just actually sort of fascinating reading. And I suggested all the citizens in town read it. It just gives you a picture of
Yeah, it's a good framework.
What a town is kind of up against and needs to think about. It's helpful.
To Paula, please. Paula's going to scan it and then we'll send it off to Billy Jones as Vermont Emergency Management and probably Derek will CC her for the Benton County Regional Commission Emergency Planner. Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, good night.
We have one more item of, it's on, it's on, on the agenda.
For discussion, I think.
Discussion, yes. Which is something that all the members of the Select Board you see the email. And it's a proposal that we adopt, quote, "A resolution condemning attacks on due process and affirming the constitutional rights of all people in the shaft." And
Thank you.
I thought perhaps we could just, it's a good idea for us each to have a printed copy. Yes. Would you like a printed copy or are you happy with that?
Sure.
And, and perhaps we could read it and think about it and discuss it formally at the next board meeting?
It's kind of long.
It's pretty long. I mean, we wouldn't have to adopt it exactly as it is. If we decided to adopt it, we could amend it. So if people are interested in adopting it, we might think about how we would amend it and come to, we could have a little working editing session. Can we have another copy of that?
I don't.
And it was adopted by Rutland. I think it's like an important, this is somebody, this statement is something that is being proposed to be adopted by various towns and we are one of them. So for our consideration, it was sent along as I'm sure it was sent to other townships. We weren't
It was sent to every township in Vermont.
In Vermont.
A number of them have already adopted.
Yeah. Just for some background.
Thank you. So two weeks from now, we can discuss it in depth and talk about it.
Great.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. Other business?
Just a couple things. Excuse me. On May 20th, there's the Southern Vermont Economic Summit locally. And last year, I think one or two people on committees went to this and the town paid for it. And they've asked again if the town will pay for it, $130. So someone on the Energy Committee and the Economic Development Committee have asked. So I'm just asking the Select Board.
I, I went to it once and it was incredibly useful to me as a planning commission.
I'm fine with that, with them doing that. That's fine. I am going to that this year. The town does not need to pay for it. The town is not paying for it.
That's, they did last year.
Is that, is that happening before our next meeting?
It's on May 20th.
May 20th.
And our next meeting?
It's the 19th.
It's on a Tuesday.
So we can talk about your presence there at our next meeting.
I'm not going in capacity of the town or as anything. I was invited, but I, yeah, we can talk about that. So, and I can learn. Bring back my learnings.
Okay, so do we want to approve the?
Those expenditures. So it's two members, two committees?
Yeah, so far.
Great.
You'll second?
I'll second.
Who moved?
I'll move. Mike moved.
I didn't move.
Okay, I'll move.
I'll second.
All right.
Any discussion on that?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Please tell them thank you for that.
Yeah.
That's great.
The only other thing I wanted to discuss was the RFP for the new building because the bids were originally due today. But I think the nature of how big the project is from a monetary standpoint and revisiting, like, we talked about this a few weeks ago, the purchasing policy. We're actively soliciting bids. So I want to just revise the RFP and take that date off of it because that's what I'm supposed to ask the Select Board to do. So I just, I'm looking for, go ahead. The RFP for the new building for the project. The bids were due tonight. We have one person bidding on them. They needed a little more time.
Got you.
But I'm also actively soliciting bids. So
Just more flexibility for
Yeah.
People who bid.
From what I have read, it's my responsibility to say, hey, I want to revise the RFP, but it's just to take that stringent date off.
And you want to leave the date open?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
Everybody can hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. And all I have? I just want to know, in addition to that, we've been talking about that, you know, if we can't find
Yes.
It's possible that we should just, you know, contract it ourselves.
Right.
Just get people we know to do various pieces of it because it's not such a complicated
Yeah, it's not a very big job or complex job.
Right.
And it's, a lot of it is cosmetic, what floors and floors and painting.
Demolition and whatever.
And a little demo, so.
Yeah.
So if it comes in at an exorbitant cost or if we don't get bids or if something like that, we want to be, you know, respectful of the taxpayer and try to find the best solution that fits a town of this size and the, you know, relative needs. And there are a lot of skilled, like skilled tradespeople here and all over the region. So I'm sure we can come up with a plan that's more than adequate to.
And given their availability, which is, you know, they're all, they're all booked.
For years.
Right, but like, maybe what I'm leaning towards is because my spidey sense is telling me that it might be easier for someone to do this part, someone else to do this part, someone to do this part floor, you know, if they have
Brainy day work.
Time, they can do part of it, not all of it.
Yeah.
But we're just seeing how this goes and we'll wait for the bid to come in as well.
It would certainly be easier if
Yeah, I mean, it's
And it was good and then somebody just handled it.
You've got to be creative and responsible and all that.
And we have a budget, so we've got to make sure.
You have a budget. Yeah. We do.
Okay. Anybody else have any other others?
No.
I do have another, as a member of the town, though. Is that like allowed?
Of course.
Okay, there is somebody driving down Old Depot during, like, during a short stretch of it, the fireworks made me think of it. And they are going 70, kind of like 70. I have a neighbor who's like really into this, so he's been watching every morning. It's the same time every day, same truck every day. They gun it right as they come over like the Arlington border. It opens up there where the little bridge is. And then they are really in excess. And they almost hit my neighbor the other day. So I'm not really sure what the procedure is for that. But maybe if there's some way that, if, they were more than willing to try to create a log. I was like, maybe create a log of what time it is and what days it is. And maybe we could let law enforcement know because
To be there at that time.
Yeah, and where that little bridge is, it's like Cider Mill, right? That's where, the little bridge before, like, it's so hard because I use everybody's names to describe their houses, which doesn't seem appropriate for the purposes of this meeting.
So it's near the Arlington border?
Yeah, so like, you know.
So the bridge is right near, it's not, it's not Cider Mill, it's Sugar House Road.
Sugar House Road, right there. So right where it opens up there, that's where
Little bridge goes over a marsh.
A little marsh and they're going from Arlington to Shasberry. And they hit like regularly at least 55, if not up to 60, 70. Then they have to slow down when the turns hit again. But a lot of people walk right in there and a lot of people are on bikes because people really do drive to that road to run on it and walk on it and ride bikes on it and with their children and their dogs.
Yeah.
Anyway, and it's, you know, this is in the daytime. I'll give him, at least he's got the daylight so he can see. But, you know, it's apparently pretty bad and ongoing. So I just thought I would bring it up and maybe
Thank you.
Yeah.
Put it on record.
Put it on record.
So it would be useful to get the picture of the license.
Yeah, he's got cameras, so I can ask my neighbor who this is happening to.
That's the way to do it.
So I can ask him to pull the, yeah.
Four times.
No, yeah, I'll ask him to pull the footage and look for the make, model, license plate number and the times. So that perhaps we could let law enforcement know. And if it's you, slow down and then nothing will happen.
Be watching.
You know, sometimes we see things and we're like, oh, I guess I won't do that anymore.
There you have it. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Phil?
No.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Unrued.
Second.
Oops. I forgot review of action items.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Just hold on to those motions. I'm calling the Bennington County Sheriff. I own that email anyway.
Yes, calling the sheriff about fireworks.
Yeah, fireworks. I'm checking that the zoning bylaws are still on the website. They should be.
The zoning bylaws are on the website and I have not removed anything, but I wasn't allowed to speak earlier. But I'm speaking now.
She wasn't saying that
She said she couldn't find it. Right, but I just want to look
Things were taken out of the bylaws.
Yeah.
I think what happened is that in the last time, things were moved around a lot in the, in the zoning bylaws. So it made it very hard to find.
Oh, we should, yeah.
You know, just make sure.
We should Ctrl F that and find it. And then if it's not there, we should tell the Planning Commission